Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the November 25, 2024 Tuolatin City Council meeting. We'll start, I'll go ahead and call this meeting in order and then move on to the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilor Gonzalez tonight.
Please put your hands up for your hearts.
The United States of America, and to the Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
So that brings us to public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the city council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in the room here who would like to address the city council, this would be the appropriate time and then I would take folks on Zoom. We have slim pickings in the audience tonight because everybody's watching on Zoom or they're flying for Thanksgiving. Anyone in Zoom? All right, everybody's started vacation early this week. All right. So that brings us up to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, those items considered routine. They'll be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of only one item, consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of November 12, 2024. Would anyone like those minutes removed and heard later tonight? If not?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as read. Second?
I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda as ready. And discussion on those motions. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. That brings us to special reports. Outside agency grant awardee, Community Partners for Affordable Housing, otherwise known SEPA. Come on up Catherine and Rachel. Welcome.
Hi. So excited to be here this evening and super grateful to have the opportunity to spend some time really just talking about the project. I feel like we've been here for other things and had the opportunity to speak kind of as a one-off, but tonight we're just going to talk a little bit about the building, remind you all, you probably don't need reminding, but like the kinds of investments that you've made in this facility or housing, that community that we're building, talk a little bit about the timeline. It's been, we've been working with, and then Catherine, who is our Director of Programs, is going to be talking about the services. So Rachel Duke, Executive Director at Community Partners for Affordable Housing, and I think we can go to the next slide. Oh, I'm in charge. There's a picture. It looks great. So my staff were there today. There's three buildings. There's a community building which you can see there in the middle, and then we have two identical buildings. Each one has 64 apartments, 68 apartments. No. It's 168.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight. I'm like, how many apartments? There's 116 apartments, 58 on each side, and we will be moving people into the apartment building on the left there in January, and then we'll be moving people into the second building in March. So we're pretty excited just about how great it looks. The kitchen countertops were in today when staff were there. So that's, you know, when the finishes start going into the apartments, it starts to feel real. So today, we just really want to thank you, we want to give you a quick update, talk about resident services, and of course, answer any questions that you might have. So first, it feels like we've been really developing this community with alongside staff and electeds with Tuolatin. We could not have achieved this building without the kinds of assistance that we got. So I definitely want to thank the city for the ARPA funds. That really helped to cover the cost of some of the work that we had to do on infrastructure. We want to thank the mayor and other staff members for the assistance with our neighbor relations and getting to the sewer, which was pretty much took six months off my life, I'm pretty sure. I want to say that one of the, one of the things I'm really grateful for is, you know, we're really close to Tuolatin High School. We can see it from the building basically, and our kids are in the Sherwood School District. So with some support from Mayor Bubinick, Leader Bowman actually also got involved and just kind of a constant reach out to superintendents, we are now in a position so that students who are in high school who wish to attend Tuolatin High School will have that choice. That is a huge relief to our staff, although we're working really well with the Sherwood School District. We know that folks, that young people are going to want to walk to high school, and we're glad that they'll have the chance to do that. And then tonight, the reason we're here is because we received some, an outside agency grant that's supporting our efforts to welcome new residents with move-in essentials. So especially the folks who are coming from homelessness, they don't have really, they're not really coming with anything. So this gives us a chance to have welcome baskets for residents and also additional like furniture from Community Warehouse for residents who are exiting homelessness. A few property details. Here's where we have the timeline. The timeline doesn't really start at the beginning because the beginning was really just before the pandemic when we were looking at the land, and then in March of 2020, two days after everything shut down for two weeks to bend the curve, I went to sign our loan documents so that we would have enough money to purchase the land. So we really started from my perspective in March of 2020, and we will be still in the lease-up process in March of 2025. So it's been a while, but we've, we've had, we've done, we've done a whole lot during that time. We annexed our building into, our building into the city in early 2021. We submitted for permitting in early 2022. We began construction in early 2023, and so we'll be moving, we've started the lease-up process now, and we'll be moving people in in early 2025. So it's taken a while, but actually it's, it's been a work at a study clip. All of the units there are below 60% of area median income. Area median income is set by, is kind of a calculation that HUD does for the whole Portland region that includes Washington and Clackamas Counties. We, for a family of four, median income is like, is just, is around $117,000 a year, and for a family of four, 60% of area median income is just under $70,000. For a single person, area median income of 60% is just under $50,000. It's around, close to $48,000. And so those are folks who are working. So a lot of times, people talk about workforce housing, and I just want to share that from my perspective, housing that's for people at 50, 60, even 40% of area median income is housing for people who are working. You are, you have to work to have money to pay your rent. So I just want to share that a lot of people will be working who live at this housing. We have a lot of folks who, we have 16 units that are set aside for people who are coming from homelessness, and Catherine will talk more about the kinds of services we'll be providing to the building and the kinds of services in particular we'll be providing to folks who are exiting homelessness. And I think one of the other things I just want to call out before I turn over the conversation on services to Catherine is that we're housing folks who are ranging from needing one bedroom to needing four bedrooms. We're going to have some really large families there. It's very hard for large families to find subsidized housing. We're really proud that we were able to include that. It adds a lot of cost and complication sometimes to the project, but we heard from the community that it was really important. So that was what we chose to do. I'd like, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Catherine, and then if there's questions, of course, we're happy to take them.
Thank you. I'm Catherine Moore, and I'm the Director of Programs at SEPA. And so we are, we're really excited about the robust service package. That, that's kind of how I've been thinking about it because it is a lot of different things that's going to be happening at Plan BAC. We will have, for the 116 units, so the whole complex, we'll have a resident service coordinator that's 100% dedicated to the site. And typically, a lot of ours are kind of split between multiple sites, so they spend some time at a property and then go to another one. But this property will have someone who is just dedicated 100% there. They'll be onsite, their office will be onsite, working really closely with property management to understand if there's concerns coming up, any tenancy concerns, residents having needs, as well as building relationship with residents to help understand kind of what things they need to meet their goals as well as improve their housing stability and prevent eviction. So they'll be, they'll be providing resource and referral for rental assistance and things like that, helping to mitigate and mediate or have conversations between landlord and the resident. And this resident service coordinator also will be focused on community building, getting, helping the residents get to know each other and build kind of the community and culture at Plan BAC Gardens. So having fun events as well as stuff that's focused on health and wellness and things that our residents, as they're moving in, we're hoping to learn from them in conversation as well as through a brief questionnaire as they're coming in to kind of understand what are the services that they're hoping for, what are the things that are going to help them meet their needs, improve their housing stability and their life. We're expecting that there'll be a lot of kids that are living onsite. We have lots of three bedrooms and some four bedrooms as well as two bedrooms. And so we're planning for that with, we have youth services at SEPA that operate some activities at all of our sites with kiddos.
And we just got a grant last week from the Oregon Community Foundation for youth service, to help us with supplies and start the youth program at Plan BAC Gardens. So we're really excited about that.
Yeah, we're excited about that. So again, some of that stuff is going to be kind of figured out as folks move in and we understand what their needs and interests are, but ideally, we're doing something weekly onsite with the kids and then also some kind of regular events with the youth and families. So whether that's bringing resources in or doing some fun like STEM or STEAM, I guess it's now called STEAM, activities kind of together, things like that, some opportunities for families to get together in the same place. And part of that with our youth and family, we're partnering with the Sherwood School District, really understanding what resources they have for the, for the youth and the families that will be attending those schools. We're in conversations with them and kind of navigating some of that now, and they're pretty invested and excited and identifying opportunities to help with like a coat drive in the winter and things like that. So the other part of the resident service coordinator will help to coordinate our other services that are going to be onsite. So we will also have 16 out of the 116 units that are permanent supportive housing units. So they will be for households that are exiting long-term homelessness who also have, who the head of household also has a disability. So folks, with the HUD definition of chronic homelessness is kind of who we're thinking of. So folks coming from long-term homelessness. Most of the units for our PSH are family-sized units, so most of them are two, three, and four bedrooms. So we're expecting that we're going to be housing families who've had significant histories of housing stabilization issues. Community, community action will be our primary partner, providing the case management, housing stability services onsite for these 16 PSH units. They'll work really closely with the resident service coordinator as well as with property management, kind of working on, again, how do we help, you know, support these households to keep their housing? They will also be onsite, which is exciting. So they're, they won't be kind of coming to visit, the households won't have to be going to them to try to get their needs met. They will have an office onsite and be available onsite. We're also partnering with a couple of other organizations, which is exciting. So we have Neighborhood Health Center that will be doing some medical and dental care onsite. We have a clinic, like a room that's a clinic space, so they'll be having some regular onsite time there. And part of that, I'll step back a little bit. So when folks are moving in, we're going to do a brief kind of questionnaire. We don't want to give them too much stuff to have to answer, but some information to help us understand how to kind of direct the services. We've been talking together with all of these partners about what services could look like, but we also really want to be responsive to who's actually moving into the property to best, so it's best meeting their needs. And so with the same, so with Neighborhood Health Center, we'll be kind of getting some information to understand what people's medical and dental needs are, what their current connection to resources is. We'll also be partnering with Central Cultural on some workforce services, including some workshops on various, various workforce or career-focused things, so resume building or how to find a job. And that again, is going to be help, is going to help, is going to be built around kind of what we're hearing people coming in as, what's their interest? What kind of jobs are they currently doing? What are they hoping to do in the future? And then Life Works, we're also partnering with Life Works for a more, so the behavioral health system is sometimes hard to navigate and it's hard to get folks in kind of through the whole process. So we've made a direct connection with them and we're, we're meeting with them monthly, and they'll continue to meet with us as well as our other partners to kind, to be able to, if we have folks, which I'm assuming we will, residents who are needing behavioral health services, Life Works will have a direct kind of connection with us and a direct kind of referral into that system as well as someone on their side to kind of help walk it through so that folks don't get lost in the, in the shuffle of things. And then communicating back and forth with our resident service coordinator to help coordinate if there's appointments that are coming up, you know, like reminder kind of things and help to build that connection so folks can successfully participate in those services. That's kind of what we have right now.
There's another picture. Not as good as the one with the outside of the building, but you can kind of see that we'll have a lot of offices and, and workspaces in that community center and that we're also planning on having gardens and excellent green space for the kids to run around on. And that's, that's our presentation for you this evening.
Thank you. Questions for Rachel and Catherine? Councilor Rith.
Not a question, but recommendations. There's some already resources here for the community that you might want to reach out to, to like, for instance, Orient Free Clinic, that's here in Tuolatin. There's also the closet with, I forget the name of the closet. Oh, caring closet. There's several things in that area where you can, the food pantry and all, you know, there's several areas, things, resources that we have within our community.
And that's, that's great. And one of the things that our service coordinators do when they get to a community is really do that, really that research to make sure they know what's available and around them. We've definitely, like, I've already connected a little bit with Cindy and we're going to talk some more, I guess, Councilor Hillier, sorry. And I've also, yeah, I mean, I think we're definitely excited that we're coming into Tuolatin. We know that it's a great community and welcoming community, and we're definitely going to link up with the resources that are here.
Our hope is with the, when the service coordinator comes on, to do kind of some resource mapping so that we do kind of have an understanding for the residents coming in, not only like where the grocery stores are at, but things like that, kind of where are these other services located.
Right, they might not know where all these things, and they might want to drive to Tiger or somewhere else, but there are some here in our local community for them to.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, have access to.
Other questions, Councilor Brooks.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm really excited. I also just want to thank the mayor too for his leadership on this because it was something that we talked about since the very first moment that we, you started your first term as mayor, I started my first term as city councillor, and we both knew Doug Plan BAC, so I always like to say his name when I think about this project. My, my question, there was two questions. One came up during, when we had the housing conversation. Is there anything that helps prioritize people from Tuolatin to access services? And I'm thinking of homeless services too. And the second one is when we, when you were talking about coordinating with resources and places, there's really interesting resources that we have, and you probably know, but at our library, we have a maker space, and we also have a library of things that people can check out, things like telescopes. I checked out a telescope one time and all different kinds of things. So there's some really interesting opportunities at our library and also just a lot of intelligence around resource collections here.
So thank you for that information, and we'll make sure, again, that that's part of our kind of resource mapping process. We are not allowed to prioritize residents in Tuolatin for the housing, but we work hard to market to folks in the community and work with agencies that are here. So, you know, we imagine and our experience is that we have people moving into our apartment buildings that do come from the community in which they're located, so.
Thank you. Yes, and I've met people just even at our, when we were having the Wheels on Wheels at the, at the senior center and some other places where people would come and have communities there.
I mean, one of the things, if it's helpful for me to send, for us to send the application, I mean, we're going to go through a whole new application process again in, for the second building, so I can definitely also send those application, that kind of copies, we have them in multiple languages, send them maybe to, would it be to you, Cheryl Lynn, to share with the rest of the council? All right. So I will definitely do that, and so folks who are connected to other community groups can make sure that they, they get out.
Great. Yeah, we have also, if you just do, Tuolatin City Council goes to all of us.
Okay.
If you ever want to do that. Thank you.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Thank you very much. This is very exciting for our community. A lot of people talked about other social services. I want to offer up employment, job fairs, you know, things like that, that we can get people into some jobs. There is many, many trades here in Tuolatin that are looking to hire intro jobs, beginnings, internship. I mean, of course, the process, but I think for us to partner with you and maybe do it at the Plan BAC Gardens and begin to create a pipeline of contacts for you, the hard one is always the first one, right, to set up. But after that, the contacts are made and, but I hope that we, I know that the Chamber of Commerce is, Tuolatin Chamber of Commerce is working through trades and developing a program for that, and I spent some time with them and on how to get youth in there. I'm sure the people who will leave here will be wonderfully eligible to apply at a beginning job or not. We'll see what kind of criteria, but I'm hopeful to help you connect with jobs.
Awesome. That's wonderful. Okay. And we have, that is one of the things Central Cultural is supposed to be doing at our community center, is working with us on employment access and, and, you know, helping people skill up for that next, that next job to take them to that next level. I want to say that for SEPA, one of the things that we're really interested in doing better at is, is helping people increase their incomes because we know we can't build housing fast enough. And one way to create more space is for people to come in, to do really, really well, to, you know, want to leave and make space for the next family. So, yes. So I think what I hear you saying is you, you actually want us to reach out to you individually, and I will be happy to do that. Thank you.
And then we can, and I know that there's still time to pass before it's all finished, but I think we can get a lot of the groundwork and talk and all that kind of stuff all figured out before that time comes and maybe, maybe position something for late 2025 or early 26 to do something already, you know? Thank you very much.
Councilor President Pratt.
Well, that leads to my question that I'm a little, don't know if I want to ask, but, so if someone comes in there and say they're at 50% of AMI and they're fortunate and they get a job and then all of a sudden they bump up to 65% of AMI, so they probably can't really afford a full rent apartment in Tuolatin. So what happens to those people when they get in that situation?
That is such a good question. And so when you income qualify for an apartment, you are in that apartment until your income goes up much higher, if you wish. Now, ideally, if we have someone who's at 110 or 100, and I actually can't remember if it's like, it's like around 120, that a family would maybe not be income-eligible for a 60% unit, but I can't swear, it's 120. But it's a, so when you get someone who's kind of getting closer to that, we don't have very many residents, to be honest, that are there, but it would make sense for our services staff to be meeting with them and talking to them about, maybe it's time to connect with the Portland Housing Center and get an IDA started and start helping people think about what it would mean to move on to another. You know, we don't want to encourage people to move to housing situations that aren't stable for them, but there are opportunities that people could take advantage of that are, that would allow them to move on.
But if someone's like just barely over their line, it's going to be time to go, right?
That kind of cliff, that kind of cliff doesn't exist in subsidized housing the way we do it.
And then I want to thank you. I've watched this developed and I'm just amazed at all the thoughtfulness that has gone into this project and dignity you're giving to people, and we really need this housing in our community, so it's very much appreciated. And my last thing is to ask that you help us advocate for a frequent seven-day-a-week bus line.
Yes. We're, we're in it with you for that, and we're, we're hopeful, right? Because there's also like a whole neighborhood being built right next door, so it seems like they got to do it. But yeah, tell us, tell us what to do. We'll do it.
Other questions, comments? All right. Well, I just want to thank you for hanging in there over these years. It seems like it took forever, but, but now it's, it's happening. So I remember back years ago, yeah, with the Neighborhood Coffee, Mr. Ray saying, yes, I'll sell, but it's, but you hung in there. You told me it would take years.
I, I feel certain that we would not have been able to accomplish this building without the support from city council. So we're really grateful to the city council and to the staff that you have because it made it possible for us to do this, so thank you very much.
Second question, how did home went about and go? I was.
Oh, we did great.
I was out of the area, so I couldn't go.
We had a banner fundraiser. It was really great, so thank you for asking.
Good. Great. Councilor Brooks.
Is there going to be a ribbon cutting? Yes, yeah, yeah, we have to schedule it. We were, we've been waiting because we kept pushing the date, move-in date back, so it looks like we're end of January or mid to end of January when people are moving in. And my guess is we'll be doing that at the second, connected to the second building in the spring, which is a much more pleasant time to, yeah.
Your pictures with the storm, you know, storm clouds.
That's true. We, we actually had a groundbreaking once in an atmospheric river for a building that was really a lot, so don't want to do that again.
Well, thank you both for coming tonight.
Thank you.
That brings us to general business, and item number one is consideration of a policy for proclamations and agenda item additions, and this is Cheryl.
Yes. Got to keep from getting rusty. So the presentation I made last minute, so I don't know if it's online, but, but the, but the policy itself was uploaded, so I hope that you have the information that you need in front of you. So this came, we had a conversation about this in a work session a while ago, back in August, and you gave direction to bring forward this proclamation for, or bring forward this policy for proclamations and then items that get added to the agenda for presentations. So the purpose for the policy is fourfold. Ensure that proclamation and agenda items have a majority of council support, of course, prior to be placed on the agenda. Make sure that we have a process for those who want to have a proclamation read or to make a presentation to the council. Ensure some flexibility so that not every proclamation or agenda item needs prior council approval because that could get a little onerous and cumbersome. And then continue to ensure that proclamations are special and valued and have a, have a, their righteous place on your agendas. So there are four established tiers in the policy, and place on your agendas. So there are four established tiers in the policy and the next slide will give examples of each one. But in tier one, these pertain to anything that have to do with the City of Tuolatin organization, including programs that are sponsored by the city. So, tier one, proclamations would, or presentations would not need prior council approval to be placed on the agenda. They just show up. Tier two would be branches of government or organizations that the city is funding. So, much like SEPA or other branches of government, like the county is coming on December 9th to talk about supportive housing services. Like, those types of things, we don't get council, that wouldn't require council approval beforehand. Tier three would be community partners, and I've got some examples in the next slide. But these, this could be like Metro West or the Chamber of Commerce or Ride Connection. And those would need prior council approval. So discussion under council communications or in a work session prior to it getting on a business agenda. And then tier four is everything else. And those need to, would require council approval. So here's some examples. If tier one, we've done National Library Week a number of years. That pertains to city services certainly. Volunteer Appreciation Week. Also, other ones include Arbor Week, Employee of the Year, National Parks and Rec Month, Public Works Week. All of those go into tier one and just show up on your agenda. Tier two, our examples of these could be Community Development Week, which is requested by Washington County, and that's the Community Development Block Grants and Home Grants that, that come forward. That's the proclamation. TB FNR, Tuolatin Belly Fire and Rescue, does an annual report. So they're another governmental agency and we just put that on the agenda. The Historical Society, the city provides funding for that. And so they're another tier two. Some other examples could be Clean Water Services, the WACA, the Washington County Communications Agency, WCCLS, Community Action. All of those would fit under tier two. Tier three are the ones, again, that are community partners. And those could include committees. So you'll remember that the IDEA Committee brought forward three requests, Tonga Day, Destonia Month, and Affordable Child Care, Affordable Housing and Child Care. And you talked about that in work session and then approved that moving forward. Yeah. And then tier four, kind of all the other things. So, I, some of the examples here are the, someone reached out to the mayor to do a month of military, of the military child. And so the mayor sponsored that one and you guys talked about it and approved that to come forward. Pretty much every year, Moms Demand Action requests that a Gun Violence Awareness Month proclamation be read. And that has been approved by council. This last, a couple of months ago, community members reached out and asked about a Constitution Week proclamation. And they came and you approved that. And then they showed up on, on an agenda. So our process in the guidelines, generally, we've said no more than three proclamations per agenda. I went back this whole year and there was only one time, one council meeting where there were three proclamations. So there, I think that's probably a good, a good number. I don't think we'll be turning that many away. In this, in this policy, the city manager always has the discretion to ask for council approval before putting an item on the agenda. So if a city councillor is the sponsor of a tier three or a tier four subject, you would need to make the request under Communications, Council Communications, either at a work session or at a business meeting. And then four affirmative votes need to be, happen in order to, for it to be placed on a future agenda. So requests can be made for a tier three or four subject by, one, you can fill out, not you, but a community member can fill out an application to request a proclamation or agenda presentation and submit that to our office. And then we will compile that and put that on a work session agenda and you will talk about that. Secondly, you could appear before the council under public comment and request council approval to agendize an item. Or third, you could reach out to a council member and get one of you to sponsor or raise the item and then refer back to bullet point three. So if you're such a sponsor, you would raise that under work session or council communications. And then you would all talk about it. We ask that tier three and four subjects submit a draft of their one-page proclamation along with their application so that we're not doing heavy lifting from our end of, of writing proclamations. There are a couple of outstanding questions. So, what tier do these fit into? So, Pride Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, Native American Heritage Month. Those were just ones that I picked up on when I was going through the, this year's council agendas. A second question is if a proclamation has been approved in previous years, like, if it's been approved once, does it need to come back for council approval? So, a, a good example is gun violence awareness. So, council talked about it once upon a time and approved it. And in future years, when they've asked, we haven't agendized it on a work session to talk about it and get approval, we've just put it on the agenda. But I'm not sure that, I, I would love some council discussion about that. And that's it. This only, there's not a resolution. It only requires a voice, a voice vote to approve. But I can, we can also change things around and bring it back for further approval.
All right. I'm going to take privilege here. First question, timing of, so, how much time does Nicole slash city staff need in order for this process to proceed normally? We used to say a few weeks before. You can't just ask the week before you want it read. What's the timeline you would like to see this done in?
I think we've said a month.
Okay.
A month before they want it read is, is the least amount of time.
Okay.
Because that allows us to get it on a work session for your consideration and then it to be read at the, at the, at the meeting.
So I would just suggest, in your guidelines, they had that in for tier three and four, as we did a month before. All right. Now I'll go to other people. Counselor Brooks.
For this last page here with the, the Pride Months and Hispanic Heritage Month and even the Gun Violence Month, if we see things recurring, I'm curious if between the time of elections and the new council and the beginning of the year, if there might be a time that we could go through the monthly ones and look at the calendar and slate ahead of time so that we don't have to be like thinking, is it three weeks before, do I have to make this? Has somebody else already got this? Is there a calendar where we have the ones put in that are, like, for instance, I know that we do one through the county for the housing and the water and things like that. So we know kind of what month safe water, drinking water is. And I think just starting off the year with what the month, what the year looks like and just planning ahead instead of waiting for the moment might be helpful with these monthly ones and reoccurring ones. That's my thought around that. And then I'm kind of curious or confused maybe. So this policy is the policy that we already have? Okay. So, I like the policy that we have. And I also like when committees come together. Like, we had the Arts Committee bring forward the, the, the recognition for Mitch last time, which I missed, which I was really disappointed. But, but they're so touching to people. And I think when committees make those considerations, that that's something that somehow adds extra weight in my mind. So, I wouldn't want them to be hooked up on a three week instead of a two week or a one week as they're volunteers and working through things. Because I think a lot of these situations have really led to empowering different people that have come up. And you could see the visible, you know, pride and change just by somebody coming up and doing this. Anyway, th- those are my two or three cents.
I guess my response to that is I do think we have it covered with our committee liaisons. So like Julie Ludeman with the Art Committee knows the timelines. Or Jerianne Thompson with IDEA Committee knows the timelines. And so, wouldn't put them in a situation where they're going to be scrambling, so.
Counselor R.
Thank you. I, I like the policy that's in place as well. I think that in terms to your question, if it has been approved once, does it need to be approved again? Or if you, does it need approval? I think when we meet, like, when we do the events meetings or when we start usually at the beginning of the year, we talk about what's coming and maybe already put on, yes, we're going to do the Hispanic Heritage Month because it's always in this time of the year. Yes, we're going to do the Pride Month. Yes, we're going to do the, like those, like, I think pre, already so that way we're not forgetting. And then it's already written and done, planned out for the whole year. So I think that would be, I'm thinking of, that way we're not pre-approved, like, I mean, we're not going to have to remind, have to remind Nicole.
Yeah.
You know, to do this. So I suggest that.
And then things don't get missed, too.
Yeah. And, and we can see the calendar of what's coming. So I think that would be a good way of answering that question and working on that. As far as the ones that are recommended by committees, I, I like the six or a month prior. Yeah. So the system that you have in place is pretty good. And I think no more than three because sometimes it gets lost in the, I mean, the proclamation, we want it to be special in value. And if you're reading more than a certain amount, then it gets lost in the whole, and then no one feels, it's, it's not special anymore. So we want it to be special as well. So, that's my thought. Thank you.
Counselor Sacco.
I really like the idea of a calendar. I think that that's a great way, I mean, it's already been said, but to make sure things don't get missed. So I definitely support that. So I just had a question about tier two and the branch of government do not need prior council approval. I also recognize that on the process and guidelines, it states that the city manager always has the discretion to, to ask council. I just want to make sure that, you know, I can't think of an example off the top of my head, but we don't always align with other branches of government. And that, you know, if we, if we see something on the agenda, that we can voice any concerns ahead of time. And I assume that, that's fine. But I just wanted to bring that up as a, just a point of clarification.
Yeah. And you all may have your own input. I think this tier two branches of government is, has been less the proclamations and more the presentations under special reports. So Metro coming to make a presentation, or the county, or Clean Water Services, or, or TB FNR. But on the proclamation bit, the only one I can think of is the Washington County with the Community Development Block Grant. But Trimet doesn't have us do a proclamation or...
There's also the Water Consortium. We also do one, once a year, just around...
Preparedness or something, yeah.
Preparedness. And there might be one other one. And I do want to say too, for the, what's the one called again? For the PAB?
Community Development, it's Community Development Week.
Yeah, Community Development Week. And they also coordinate diorama stuff in the library as well. So I mean, I think that it's like, I think that's part of the reason why is because it's like such a, a full-throated effort to try to raise awareness around what the services are that we're getting beyond the city that we tap into from the consortium and from the PAB, that kind of stuff.
Did you finish your point? Just make sure you're, Counselor Hillier.
So I just want to clarify, would we do like in work session at the beginning of the year, just the calendar and then just approve it for the year? I just really love that efficiency and clarity. So, thank you. Yes.
And Nicole already does a really good job of that for us internally, for our, our agenda planning calendar and puts them on for the whole year. So that's very easy to bring that forward and get your stamp of approval.
Counselor President Pratt.
So what, okay, I had a different idea, but, so if you did that calendar with, I want someone, I mean, these are all great, I think. But if someone hadn't, wanted to call one out, my idea was to put it on the consent agenda, the meeting before. And then someone could call it out. But if we did it at the beginning of the year with the calendar, would that be the point? Would, if someone had an issue with one, they could have a discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's the same idea that...
Yeah.
I'm sorry, squint that again?
Well, my idea was like, on these, like, so say, just say Pride Month was coming up in a month or in, at the next council session. So it would be on like this consent agenda.
For the next meeting.
Yeah. We'd approve it this meeting for the next meeting. But that way, if someone had an issue, they could bring it up for discussion and explain why they have an issue. But I think the beginning of the year works too. You know, it's the same idea. I just want people to have the opportunity, if they don't agree, to
Yeah.
Make their point.
Yeah. I, I think the ones that would go on the kind of recurring calendar aren't ones that would
But we can do that all at once, yeah.
Be controversial or...
Not usually, but...
But, yeah. Maybe we can talk about it when we list them all out and...
And then my other question was, I know we had one where, you know, we had an, it was the George Floyd thing, but that, that happened at the next council meeting. We didn't wait a whole month.
No.
So do we have room for exceptions?
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, for sure.
Counselor Brooks.
That was going to be similar to what I was saying to the, the ones that we would plan ahead are the ones that we plan ahead. But we don't always identify the people that we're going to honor or
No.
The events that are coming up in the year. But I do like that because even with the gun violence, for instance, they can change the proclamation a little bit. Or in the beginning of the month, we have the full council there to make the decisions so that we're not making assumptions about what the next body would want to approve or not. So I'd like that. And then the other question I had around this, just because it kind of ties in for me, when I first came in, is the difference between a proclamation and a resolution and maybe also having a conversation of clarity like this around what our resolution policy is and, and what the difference between a proclamation and resolution are. I think it's important to know. Because they're both red announcements and, but they have very different implications.
So, would you like that conversation when we bring forward this kind of recurring calendar? Maybe a conversation about the various options? Because you've done statements.
Yeah.
You've done a resolution and you've done proclamations.
Yeah. I think, I think, however you think. I mean, I think this, I think this work session item was helpful to me. And I don't know if, what, how people feel, but whatever you think.
A resolution's a lot heavier, if you will, than a proclamation. A resolution doesn't come usually from the public. It comes from us.
Yeah.
So it's, it's kind of a different process in my mind.
No, it's a different process. But I just think the clarity, like, we have, like, what's our policy on it? What does it do? Just like this, three slides, simple, but just so everyone's educated and knows, you know, what all of our levers do.
I'm not sure I completely understand because what... I'm not sure I completely understand because what, like resolutions, we have a variety of resolutions on every, on every agenda, right? And, but you have used resolutions before in place of a proclamation?
Yeah.
Because it had more weight.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking about? When it's, when it's, instead of a proclamation, using a resolution, that kind of clarity?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right. I think we can have some kind of discussion about that.
Yeah, it's very simple, but, yeah. And maybe statement to like what the difference of all of them are.
Counsel Gonzalez, didn't you have your light on? Okay. Other questions, comments? So good start, we like what we see? Okay. So what do you need?
Well, I would, I, we would like an adopted policy. So I, if you could adopt this policy, that would be great and we could, that would be a formal, a formal adoption by the council. And then we'll come back in January and have this calendar management discussion along with the clarity of what levers you have.
Do you have to bring back this policy for adoption or just...
No, you can voice vote it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we okay to vote right now?
I'll make a motion to adopt the proclamation policy as has been explained.
With changes?
With the updates of...
About the recommendation, I mean, about the timeline.
Oh, the timeline, we'll add a timeline.
A difference between a resolution and proclamation, that stuff.
Yes.
Second.
Thank you.
I have a motion, second to adopt the policy for proclamations and agenda item additions with requested changes and discussions on those motions. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Abstentions? Unanimous. All right. And then there's Mayor's Proclamation, so I can just do. All right, so that brings us to item number two in general business, consideration of ordinance number 1495-24, amending Twelton Municipal Code 8-1-252 to add an additional street southwest 96th Drive. As you recall, this failed on our last meeting, so this would be our adoption ordinance right now. It's not technically a third reading, right? It just, we just vote on it, correct, Kevin? It's a roll call vote?
You're correct, Your Honor. It's a, it's technically a final reading and there can be certainly discussion if there is going to be any, then a motion, can invite a motion for approval. All right?
So in regards to consideration of ordinance number 1495-24, do I have a motion to adopt? And then I will have moments for discussion.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 1495-24.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adopt ordinance number 1495-24. Any discussions on those motions? Counsel Hillier.
I just wanted to say that I want to share with the community why I'm changing my vote to, from a no vote to a yes vote. And probably no one's listening but us, but I wanted to say that I've done some additional research and I'm not going to probably get into all of that, but in this instance, I do think it is what is best for the community. And I am also hopeful that when we see the contractors report that there'll be added people to that, to gathering information and being interviewed for that. And I look forward to getting to implement some great things for our community.
All right. Any other comments? All right, so through the roll call vote. Yep, go ahead.
Just want to make a comment that I am in favor of this because I care a lot about the community and that, and the people, the residents of that, but also I want to make sure that it's, it is during school hours only. So I just want to make sure that that's stated, that this is only for during, during school hours and school days. So on the other time, people can park there.
Any other comments? All right, Counsel Sacco.
No.
Counsel Hillier.
Yes.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Gonzalez.
Yes.
Counsel Brooks.
Aye.
Counsel President Pratt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it's six to one in favor. All right. We had no items removed from consent, so we'll move to council communications. We didn't have those at the end of the work session, so we'll have those now. And we'll strike out for Counsel Gonzalez.
I wish I had some more to report, but it's been so quiet, so, thank you.
Counsel Brooks.
Hi, I'm this last council meeting because I was down at the NLC in Tampa. It was a very busy conference. It was celebrating their 100-year anniversary, so there were a lot of extra bells and whistles. I have a lot of pictures. If anyone wants to talk to me further about it, that's fine. There's some interesting projects that they're putting forth, so I'll share that information. I'm still kind of getting my head around all of it, but one of it, one of the ones that sounds interesting to me is a program that helps enhance people's work, earning potential in communities. So I'm interested in that and, and I just want to say to the leadership, it was a really good kind of reset for me. The leadership there is so strong and it was nice to see people from all across the country. And again, I know it's kind of weird, but I caucus with the Black Caucus and I had conversations with people, especially young men, and just them talking with me and feeling okay, I guess, or respected or something. There were several instances where people were literally be clamped and really moved. So I think that in this time, it's a good reminder that there's a lot of people that are dealing with a lot of pain and concern about how their neighbors feel about them. And being kind and authentic with people helps to alleviate some of that and it's Also, on Friday, November 22nd, I attended the Washington County Department of Housing Services 2024 Annual Housing Forum that was chaired by Chair Harrington, Congresswoman Bonamici was there, State Senator Lieber was there along with Molly Rogers, who's the Executive Director for Department of Housing. And there were two panels discussing housing in the budget. And I went with Metro Council Rosenthal, so it was interesting. He and Chair Harrington talked, they're both talking about different kinds of communication. So some of the encouragement that we've had around this conversation, that's, that was some of my follow-up with that. And then on Tuesday evening, we met with the Twelton Arts Advisory Committee, mostly going through some old business. One of the things is we put out an RFP for more art for the traffic wrap boxes. And we got applications, we got, I think it was over 30 applications? I might be getting that mixed up with a different number. And we got them from our community, our state, across the country and from other countries, including Greece and other places. So some of the work that we did for the RFP for the statues in the, in the Veterans Plaza was a foundation for that. And I just want to really thank the Twelton Arts Advisory Committee for their work and help with our procurement process and their vision around and how, what they, what they help bring to our community with art and also our Parks Department. And I mentioned, as we look for it, too, I wouldn't mind them being a voice on doing the reviews for different applicants for, that come in for that Parks Director job. I think that's all I've got.
All right. Counsel Sacco.
Thank you. On November 18th, we had an Idea Committee meeting. We continued discussing topic prioritization and really diving into the topics that the committee has chosen and understanding where we are right now and having some historical context as well. And then they also brought forth the land acknowledgement, which they're interested in working on. And then I believe they're going to be here next meeting. So really excited to see their first council presentation.
Counsel Hillier.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't have any meetings over this last period. However, I would like to bring an important issue to this body and I'd first like to thank Sherilyn and Bates for helping me be able to do this. It'll be on the screen in a moment. So this is a fifth grade project for the 2020 class that went through Byram Elementary. See this beautiful project that was made with love for children who left school in March, who had to stagger, had parents who staggered in a driveway making this project and putting it up because they, of course, didn't get their normal clap out. They didn't get any of the things because of the class of 2020. You know, we all know what happened there. So if we can move on to, this was about three weeks ago, there was vandalism and you can see that, well, actually, I take that back. That was last week, this last Monday. Not this Monday, but anyway, it was, was the second week because the first week, three of the flowers were down and the second week, these two flowers were down. So, and you can see other damage that was done in the garden if we go to the next slides. This, the art that you see on the side of the building was the following year's fifth grade project. And then you can kind of see Bates will show some of the other destruction that happened in the garden. And I just want to say that I think our community needs to be aware that there are individuals in the community who are making really bad and destructive decisions and they are affecting our children. These children are devastated. They're high school freshmen, excuse me, sophomores right now. And this is, in my opinion, disgusting. Yes, there have been police reports filed. There are no lights out there or anything. And so I'd like to just say that if anyone is interested, they could donate funds to the Byram Elementary PSO to help with the garden reconstruction. And I'm also offering a hundred dollar reward to anyone who actually gives information that will find who was the culprit of this activity and they, I would like them to be able to speak for themselves in a restorative justice format.
Thank you. Counsel Reyes.
Yeah, no official meetings. Thank you.
Counsel President Pratt.
Wow. I walk half the time.
I'm bad, sorry.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, right, so.
Okay, I went on to the Clackamas County Business Association City Managers Forum that Sherilyn was at, but she was not feeling well, so. But it was very interesting. Part of it was just hearing from their perspective that the, the things we think that are challenges, like dealing with these state mandates and things like that are just, just challenging for them. And then how they're dealing with, like one thing was the issues like Oregon City, this just shocked me, but they, so the county's supposed to take care of housing and the homeless situation. Oregon City has two people and staff that just deal with that and they pay it out of their general fund because they're the county seat and that's where people go and that's where the services are, but their city is actually having to pay for that.
No wonder.
And then the other one I thought was interesting is, we all know because of the, the freeze on the, you know, the real estate increases, how it doesn't keep up long-term. So Happy Valley, very wisely, they put their, I think, they put, their whole funding for their police and their parks is on a levy, a five-year levy. So you don't approve it, no police, no parks. So that's just a way, they kind of worked the system to get additional funding, which I thought was really interesting. I went to, there was a welcome thing for, at the Washington County Chamber for newly electeds and I thought the best part was I got to talk with a lot of commissioners and talk about our issues, so that was all good. I did go to the River Parks CIO meeting. I didn't have a conversation with them, saying hi to anybody. I sat in the back near the mayor and what I really got out of it were, people were concerned, but they also lacked knowledge. And I thought our city staff, Mike McCarthy, he could see, but I thought they did an excellent job of helping to explain things to our community members. And last, oh, I went to the C4 Metro meeting and they talked about regional emergency transportation routes and they're at the second level looking at this for when we leave. But the one I wanted to point out is that a main regional route, if in an emergency in our part of this town, I guess, is Highway 99, which is a little frightening to me. Highway 99 is the main emergency route if there was a disaster. That's a big route in our area, the biggest route they're expecting to be used. So I found that a little frightening, but anyway, on that, hope you know what I'm doing.
Get your mic back on. Go for it.
Cindy, Counsel Hillier, could you please, if somebody's going to donate money for this cause, which I'm, you know, I have resources with our work that I can help with this. If we need to put that back together, dig it all up, you know, I'll reach out to you and maybe we can make that arrangement sooner than later because, you know, for the kids to see that kind of destruction there now and to be there day one, day two, day three.
Thank you. All right. First item is, it's that time of year to think about council assignments. So I was discussing this with Sherilyn. I said, okay, no one's really come forward about changing their assignments. It sounds like people are happy, but think about between now and our December meeting, if you would like to proceed with the process of shuffling council assignments at the beginning of next year on the 13th. If you would like to do that, you know, we'll have Nicole send out the sheet. You can check off your preferences and stuff like that. But if you're happy with the way things are right now, then we can just skip that item of work for next year. But, you know, think about it between now and December, I'll bring this back up in December. Second item is the Washington County Coordinating Committee meeting on the 18th. Two major items. So with Mayor Callaway being termed out, Washington County had to pick a new primary representative for Washington County and secondary representative. So Mayor Jeff Delane Cornelius, who's been the alternate for basically years, is now the primary and Mayor Lube of Tigard is the secondary. We had a interesting discussion, which usually doesn't happen, with misstep funding about, there's what they call the Capital Opportunity Fund, which is a new part of the misstep process. But Metro has something what's called the Regional Flexible Funds Allocation. And so Washington County produced several projects that, you know, they're going to go after money for. And it's approximately 4.8 million of county funds. And then they're asking for about 50 million from Metro for these projects. The one that got picked on, if you will, a lot is THPRD had a project for a West Side Trail pit and bike crossing. The cost of this project is anywhere between 25 to 32 million dollars. And the mayors all wanted to know from Washington County that this is not in any city. This project is in undercover Washington County. And in the event that this project gets, you know, of small allocation, where's Washington County going to come up with the 20-odd million dollars? And is this taking money away from cities that could make a project whole? Say Twelton had a project we didn't have in this, in this instance, that the city could actually make it whole, like Tigard can make projects whole, Beaverton, obviously Hillsborough has a major one, but Washington County can't. We know the, the status of their budget. So their mayors were kind of miffed that Washington County was supporting this and pushed back and said, okay, we'll approve this for now, but we want to have regular check-ins of, okay, if we're going to take this allocation out of the opportunity fund, if this project tanks at the metro level, we want that money back right away into the pool to be allocated somewhere else. And that's been a problem because misstep is a five-year, six- And that's been a problem because misstep is a five-year, six-year process, and they've held the money for that whole year, over those years. So this will be change of process for Washington County, but it was, Mayor Beatty went after this and it was, and all the mayors were with her about, this is like half of the, the money being asked for from Metro is for unincorporated Washington County, which nothing held in, you know, THPRD, but THPRD is a well-funded organization. So it was interesting, you know, changed things up, wasn't doing, you know, your normal meeting. Continuing on that theme, the chair's meeting, of course, you know what we talked about, the support of housing services. Chair Harrington relayed on why Washington County is still unhappy with Metro's proposal, and right after our meeting, that's when the board issued that five-page letter to Metro stating all their objections to the proposal at this time. On the 19th, I was with Valerie, you know, Council President Pratt at the CIO meeting, again, yeah, staff did a fantastic job, and Mike was rope it open at the end, but he had great answers, he didn't hold back, and he actually got some ideas for some neighborhood safety projects that he's going to add to the list. On the 21st, was the Metro Mayor's Consortium meeting, Greg Johnson from the Interstate Bridge Project presented on the status of the Interstate Bridge Project. If you want to see some really cool stuff, go to interstatebridge.org/visualizations. They have basically the visualizations of all the whole area around the bridge and how the bridge will look, how the approaches will be on the different islands, all the way from basically the Rose Quarter up to five miles into Washington. And it's unbelievable, these little virtual flyovers of what they're envisioning, what it's going to look like. The big question mark, of course, we all ask about is, do you think you're going to get this $3.1 billion from the feds with the new administration? They're saying they're pretty positive because it's a, according to them, it's a bipartisan effort, and they're going in full speed to get as much grant money, as much stuff they can get by January 20th, and that's why I was thinking about the R, R grant, because they said they know as soon as the Trump administration takes over, everything's going to go in a long pause at transportation. So, you know, if you're not hustling right now to get your money, they are, and they suggested, yeah, work as fast as you can, because even if your project is approved by transportation, it's going to be stalled for months when they have a new Transportation Secretary, new staff, so that's where, that's what they're going with, just, they're doing double time to get all as much money as they can between now and the 20th. Then that followed with Metro President Peterson, she was only supposed to talk to us for 30 minutes, but she talked to the mayors for 60 minutes with Metro's side of the story of why the counties are wrong. So it'll be interesting where we have, we're going to have Washington County come to us with their presentation where we can ask all the questions we want to know about, you know, why the county's not happy with Metro's proposal as it is right now, and then we're going to have Metro come at the very beginning of January, we can ask those questions, so be paying attention, if you will, to the stuff I'm sending out, I know it can get mind-numbing, but this is very important because not, the counties are still not on board with what Metro's doing, and Metro, in my opinion, is at the point where they don't give a crap. It's, it's, they're going to get this on the ballot in May, and how they're going to get this folks to vote for it is with a tax cut. So a 10% tax cut upon adoption of the ballot measure passing, then another 10% cut a year later, and this is done, being done mainly to assuage the Portland Business Alliance, so we can ask all these questions when they hear. And then finally, that afternoon, Gray Portland Inc., the Small Cities Consortium, Roslyn Mock from the Ford Family Foundation came, and I was very excited about all this money they have for economic development planning, they got grant money galore, and you're considered rural if you're less than 35,000, and then my balloon burst when they said, but you can't be part of a metropolitan area higher than 50,000. So, but it's fantastic news, we're gonna, we sent this all off to like North Plains, Banks, Gaston, they have money for, help them do economic development grants, all kinds of stuff, and they meet the qualifications, we just don't. But I was not aware of the whole history of the Ford Family Foundation, I've got, I was actually holding the book, Oregon by the Numbers, that they publish every year, so it was a fantastic presentation, just, I was like, Wilsonville, both Wilsonville and my, Matt Lorenson from Wilsonville and I were like, crap, if we're just a few miles more south. And I say, well, Matt, you gotta do projects with candy. So, but that's it for me, anything else for tonight? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, that was in stereo, all in favor, say aye. Aye. So it's unanimous, thank you for joining us tonight, hopefully everybody's watching TV, have a very safe and happy Thanksgiving.